There's your storm.
Yeah.
We were debating bringing in the umbrellas.
I said I'm gonna make a run for it.
I brought one.
No, I told her we would share.
It rained really hard at Pinewood.
I did?
Then I thought maybe I shouldn't come to the meeting. So I looked out the window and it didn't look like the sidewalk was wet. It seems like it's gonna come down and then it's a storm.
Okay.
It rained on Pinewood but nowhere in the whole.
It's six o'clock. Are we ready to start?
And you look fabulous. You look fabulous. You didn't even get wet.
Gavin, are we ready?
Bring my umbrella.
Okay.
There you go.
So we'll call the six o'clock meeting of the Monticello School Board to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and America indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and I do want to note that Board Member Jamie Seaborn is not here tonight. And now I can call for an approval of the agenda.
Sound moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. And we do not have any citizens' comments for tonight, but we do welcome our new student representatives for the year. So, did you have anything to say for that, to introduce them or anything? Or just introduce themselves?
Yeah, we'll have them introduce themselves and tell a little bit about yourself and then give your student update and yeah.
How do you want us to do it, like just stand up?
Yeah, well, it'd be best if we have you go to the mic. Yep.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so my name is Amelie Suppana Al-Mohamed. I am a senior this year. Something about myself, I'm pretty short. Here, Natalie, choose yourself next and then we'll get on with some things we want to mention in this first couple of weeks of school, right?
I'm Natalie Emmerich. I'm going to be a senior this year. I'm in volleyball and then I do a lot of things with like unified and I'm on the very sort of same board professional logistics.
Okay, so these first couple of weeks, I think something that we, I've heard like a lot of complaints with my other classmates is that there've been a lot of complaints with schedules and specifically a lot of students dislike the ABC lunch. I know COVID is going on, but I did feel the need to bring up the fact that students really did prefer either that big, you know, lunch that we had when Natalie and I were back in ninth grade or if we could not do that, there were separation grades. I mean, I have LSHV and personally I do think it's a bit inconvenient that we have to split my fourth hour class like in half so that I can eat lunch in the middle. So that's something that I've heard a lot of my friends and classmates really not like. They did not like the decision. I hear a couple of things about it every day. Yeah. Oh. Passing time. Right, so in my homeroom, I have Mr. Yerba in my homeroom and I did hear this complaint that students did not like the four-minute passing time. A lot of students said that they would prefer it if school start like ended at 2:40 if that means that they get like five minutes of passing time because it does feel like a bit inconvenient for them. It feels, even I personally feel like it's a rush. A lot of my friends, not a lot, but quite a few have been marked tardy for class because they're simply not used to that four-minute passing time. So adding that extra minute could avoid a lot of tardies in my opinion.
Yeah, another thing about the passing time is we have a new rule. It's like the ten and ten rule. We're not allowed to get passes to go to the bathroom or go quick to our locker for the first 10 minutes and the last 10 minutes. And that's really hard at the passing time because usually if we don't have like enough time to like go and do those things during our four-minute passing time, we'll quickly go get a pass at the beginning or at the end of class to go and get those things instead of going in the middle of class when there's usually a lesson or our teachers are usually talking. And then another one of our rules is just no phones. It's isn't really hard for us, like we're pretty focused in class, but that's just another one of our things. And then lastly, another thing that we have is magic hours. It's if you have like three tardies during the day or like through a certain amount of time, you're gonna get a new magic hour, which is pretty much you, like an hour that you make up at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day.
A lot of students are probably like confused by magic hours. Like it kind of sounds fun. So a lot of students are like, oh, I want a magic hour. It was more similar to like attention. Uh, we want to stop at homecoming, yeah. So many of you may already know, we voted for the homecoming king and queen today. That was kind of fun. But, uh, I know a lot of students wanted to know more about Iron Man and Powderpuff. They wanted to know whether or not these activities would come back. I know in the years prior, we had like a volleyball tournament between like, I think it was split between boys and girls. And I think around this kind of year before, that's when we would talk about this stuff and, you know, inform the students whether or not it was going on. So I believe sometime soon we should tell students whether or not these tournaments or these fun activities as like a whole school would be happening again.
Um, and then just like our dress up days next week are Monday pajama day, Tuesday jersey day, Wednesday decades day, Thursday class color day and Friday spirit day. So just like red, black, white.
I believe that's everything. Do you guys have any questions for students as student representatives?
Thank you both for coming and sharing the bus.
I know that, you know, high school principals and administration will continue to answer some of those questions that you may still have lingering. Um, but, you know, so expect those in the next week or two.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll be able to tell people.
Yeah.
Welcome too.
Thank you.
Pleased to have you.
Nice to be here.
Then moving on to the consent agenda, Board Members, you would have received everything in the Board packet. Just a note that lien changes were added to personnel matter today, I think. If there's anything that you have questions on, anything to discuss, now is the time. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. And now we go on to our nutrition services report with Sierra.
Nope.
Nope.
Sierra.
Am I skipping something? Oh, yep, there we go. Our preliminary levy with Tina.
Yeah, I get to follow the love of students with such confidence. Love it. So my first item tonight is to approve and present our preliminary property tax levy. Last week, September 8th is the deadline where the Minnesota Department of Education has to present or report all our preliminary property tax levy reports to the school districts. So it's a busy time of year for them, just like it's a busy time of year for us, getting students ready and families ready for the first week of school. The Finance Department at MDE is crunching all the numbers, trying to get all the calculations in place from all the different areas of school funding and get it in our preliminary tax levy report. So the summary that's linked in your packet is, was the first one and very preliminary. There was some things that I noticed that were missing. And this wasn't just for Monticello, it was for different all schools as well. For example, it was missing our building age calculation, which affects our operating capital amounts and that has an aid levy calculation. So that wasn't quite at the level it should be with that missing building age calculation. Some of the levy amounts that are tied to Wright Technical Center. Through us, they levy for long-term facility maintenance levy and their lease levy for their building is also tied to our property tax levy and all the members of the agreement. So those amounts were missing from the property tax levy report. So right now it showed a decrease in our general education levy of 223,000 or a minus 2.5%. But I predict that to be a little more closer to budget or levy neutral from the previous year. The community service levy had an increase of 26,000. But that was also missing an opening doors calculation in all the reports. So that will be a little higher since the first report. A lot of that has to do with having a new census population report for Monticello. We had an increase in our district population, I think close to 1 to 2,000. So that's good news for Monticello and also our school age care expenditures were more than the revenue coming in, so there was adjustment for that. The debt service levy was decreasing by about 89,000 or minus 2.63%. That appeared to be normal, but I think there was some more calculations happening with that. But once those things come in, I think the overall levy prior to any successful operating referendum is gonna be pretty close to last year's levy amount. So tonight, we don't have another September Board meeting, so we need to approve the levy to the max. We don't want to approve a specific dollar amount because if there is an error in the calculation and we should get more levy than what is being calculated, that ties it to just having that dollar amount. So school districts in September just approve the levy to the max. And that has to get submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education by September 30th in both our counties, Wright and Sherburne.
Any questions for Tina?
And at the committee meeting next week, I can give you a more up-to-date of how it's looking.
Thank you, Tina. Do I have a motion to approve the preliminary levy to the max?
Motion to approve property tax levy to the maximum.
Second.
Motion made by Candy, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. And now to the year-end transfers.
So I have two transfers asking for Board approval tonight. The first one is a transfer to the general fund from the food service fund. We have angel fund activity, whether it's donations to the angel funds or we've moved money from angel funds to accounts that were negative from the previous years. And that has to be a transfer from the food service and the general fund. So overall, we didn't have a lot of negative, meals were free, so we didn't have a lot of families with negative balances. It was a lot of cleanup from the two years ago. So overall, asking for approval amount of $185.23 to the general fund from the food service fund. Do you want me to kind of go through both and then?
Do you want us to do one motion for both or one motion for each one separately?
It doesn't matter.
Then go ahead. We'll do one motion for both.
The second is a transfer from our building construction fund to the debt service fund in the amount of $941,875.38. This is from unspent proceeds that we had in a bond to do the Pinewood indoor air quality project. So if you have unspent funds, that has to be returned back to the debt service fund and that will reduce future property tax levies. This bond was approved, or this project was approved in a, in 2018-19 school year through that 10-year plan, our long-term facility maintenance plan to improve the air quality at Pinewood. So based on that project and how things were bid out and kind of what we were able to accomplish, we had $941,875.38 to give back to the debt service fund to offset future levies. Yeah, so that will help probably over two years. Gets a little tricky because with debt service property taxes, we have to levy for 105% of our bond payments. And so if you go back to the property tax levy summary, there is a reduction for excess fund balance. So that's kind of where you would see that amount. If our fund balance gets too high, the state does a calculation to kind of return that excess fund back to the property taxpayers.
Any questions for Tina?
I make a, I'll go ahead.
Can I get a motion to approve the two transfers?
I make a motion to approve the year-end transfers as presented by Tina, Board Member.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Candy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Now on to the nutrition services report.
Hi, everybody. This is my yearly nutrition services report. Sierra, we found, the Director of Nutrition Services for Sedexo and Monticello Public Schools. Gavin, you can go to the next slide. This is our agenda. We talked about the meals served over the last year. We're gonna talk about some of our customer service, focus service. Some of the events we did last year, the 21-22 school year, and I have some thank yous. Go ahead, Gavin. There you go. Sorry, I did this in front of my screen and computer, so it was much easier to read. So last year, obviously, everybody knows meals were free, which was kind of a nice perk for us. As a school district, we served a total of 262,376 breakfasts. A total of 344,426 breakfasts. I said that probably wrong. That's a total and then combined, just as a FYI for people who are wondering, I'm always standing on the side. If anybody ever saw me dressed up in my snowman dress or my fun hats or anything fun while I was in the lines. For breakfast, we did 51,111 breakfasts and lunches just out of distance, learning meal packs and hybrid meals and on the buses. So just out of that total, we were packaged, sent out, sent home, carved and laid and got them to people who didn't come to school. So those are meals that we were leaving to people who weren't in school, which was really nice. And then these are pictures of our staff. We wanted to make sure that we were able to show this. So we have a picture of our staff outside in the cold. We were outside at the middle school, some meals that we had packaged over at Little Mountain. My staff over at Eastview, they were either serving or just standing, you know, not standing around, but we took a quick snapshot. But this was us just getting the meals out to the families. So this is our total meals served for the school year. Go ahead, Gavin. So how did we do it? I think the better question is, how did we not do it? So we kind of did it any way we needed to at the time. So elementary depended on how we needed to do it. So we served breakfast either in the classroom or in the cla, or in the cafeteria. We served them in the nature-based locations. We put them in little containers that looked like airline containers. We packaged them. We got little sealers. We could seal their breakfasts. We did the same thing with lunches. We did grab and go at the secondary locations for breakfast, but then in their lunches, we just spread them out for as far as we could go. And then we made sure we had packages for, like I said, hybrid days and our distance learners. So any way that you could do it, because we had those packaged meals, I also have this picture here, you can see where we actually made trays for our students, so that way they could see. So when they were like, are you want a hot lunch? Do you want a cold lunch? They didn't know what they were asking for. We actually set out displays, so the students knew what they were eating. So they weren't like, I don't know what that is. Because some of our younger learners, you're like, do you want rotini? They're like, I don't know. What is rotini? So that way they could see the tray. They actually had those displays. They could see what it was. They had that visual. And then we handed them the thing that had the lid on it and it was safe and it was COVID-friendly. So it made it a lot easier for them. We set up displays, made it look really nice. And it was really great. And obviously, we were all COVID-safe and protocolled and wonderful in the kitchen. Any questions over? Gavin? My favorite part of nutrition services is I like working with the kids. So despite COVID, we had fun. I love being with the kids. That is my absolute favorite part. I love dressing up. Most days you'll find me dressed up looking kind of a little crazy. But some of my favorite events are the things that we did this year. The very first picture here is our Minnesota Great Apple Crunch, which is celebrated every October in Minnesota. I went out to the Nature Base Center and I taught preschool and kindergarten about our apples and all the different varieties of apples that we serve in the world and what kinds there are. And then we actually tried apples and had it crunched together all at once. And then, and they were actually, we got them from the Deer Lake Orchard, which is really great. So they had a Sweet Tango apple that was local from the area. And they loved that. So we had a lot of fun. It was really great. And I was really excited. And then we did vote and be heard, which was fun because we did it on voting day for everyone except for, I think, the high school and the middle school because they did hybrid days. So some of them didn't vote on voting day. They did it the next day. But then they got to have, I made voting booths, so they got to go to the booth. They got to vote for some, their favorite meals. And then a week later, we actually served that meal that won. So they actually got to see that process in action and they got to eat it and they also got a cookie treat. So they got to vote and have chicken nuggets because that's what won, or beefy nachos, whatever, meal won. And then they also got a cookie because who doesn't want a cookie? So it was really fun. And my kids made fun of me because I spent a lot of time wrapping those boxes to make sure it was perfect. But it was a lot of fun, so we learned about voting with food. Go ahead, Gavin. A couple more things. Staff training day. Eric and Tina helped me bring in some people. We had an extra day for some of our elementary staff didn't have a working day because we ended up having to be closed. So we brought in a gentleman who helped train our staff to work together a little bit more. So we had a fun day for some of our staff. So they learned how to cooperatively work together. Then on the bottom, we had National Pizza Party Day. So we brought in balloons and we had pizza and watermelon and made it into a party. Dr. Seuss Day, you can see me, I'm dressed up here at Dr. Seuss Day. On winter break day, they got hot cocoa in our distance learning meal packs. I believe I dressed up as a snowman on this day too. And then I, we had a nice little candy cane treat. So anybody who got a meal pack going to distance learning, they got a nice, you know, little treat for the winter. This pitcher made these foot-long hot dogs. Totally worth the months of trying to track down foot-long hot dogs during a pandemic. I got this from one of our staff members. This is her kiddo. She let me use it because she, I asked permission. But we got, did a twins opener, foot-long hot dogs, chips, the whole nine yards. The kids loved Foot Long Hot Dog Day. It was totally worth it and I've been told I must track them down again. So we're already on the hunt for foot-long hot dogs because I believe it was a huge hit. So these are some of the events. One more on the next one. One more, Gavin. This is, we did senior breakfast. This is actually an event that I created. I actually talked to Lori Hansen about this because I actually did a catering event at a previous school district I worked for that we had, the high school at that district had to pay for, and I thought breakfast is free. I have a marketing budget and breakfast is free. And I asked her if she would allow me to please create a senior breakfast for the seniors. And she said, go for it. And so we created a breakfast. We had the kids come in after their pitcher and we did waffles and sausage and fruit and milk and water and had a selfie wall and balloons and she helped me decorate all the tables. And we had a blast, so they had a huge senior breakfast. We figured they had zero fun for COVID. So we definitely had a lot of fun. So this was one of my big things and I was able to do this while using it for reimbursable breakfast, so it didn't cost the district anything, which was great. So this was one of my favorite events because they had nothing and I was able to do this. And they were really excited. So I really enjoyed it. All right, Gavin? You're gonna have to click a few things because it does a... So 2021. It's what really is, we're gonna do this year, kind of the same thing, free breakfasts and lunch for everybody. Hey! We really like it. Makes it really great for everyone. We are gonna be usually utilizing seamless summer option. Last year, we used the summer feeding option, which means nothing to anyone except for me because I'm the only one who knows the difference. The big difference is the, we're using the National School Lunch Program feeding size, which we actually did do last year. I decided as the director, I didn't want to make our feeding size smaller. We still use the same size. So all it means is we're staying exactly the same. And we get to bring back the garden bars at the schools. So we definitely, we started at the middle school and the high school already. We're working on bringing them back at the elementary school as we're seeing that it's working. And we'll be working with elementary schools to see when that works for them as the kids are getting used to them. And that COVID restrictions are being lifted for that access, but they are back at the high school and the middle school. We are returning more back to normal. However, if things change, we are already ready to pivot and we're working with our vendors to make sure that if we need to, we are ready to do so and all of our staff are prepared to. But we are back ready and rolling already this last week, even with the dips of when ninth graders are back and when the first through 10s, we've already served 1,800. and when the first through 10s, we've already served 1,819 breakfasts and 6,320 lunches. Not including today. That was just last week. So we are already back in full swing with staff. All right, next slide. My biggest shout-out obviously is to my staff. Without my staff, I could not do it. I am one person, and they are all amazing. They are, have risen to every challenge we've given them. They've been here for crazy weird hours. They normally are a six to one o'clock. They have been here seven, eight o'clock at night, trying to pass out meals to families when it works for our staff. They are amazing, and they have definitely had a rough year last year, and I'm hoping that we have a smooth sailing year. But they are amazing, and I truly appreciate everything that they do. Obviously, all of the staff who helped us, our paras, our teachers, all the support staff who've been here to help us, our custodians, we couldn't do without them. They clean, they put away things. I've never seen custodians who help their food service staff as much. I tell my staff all the time, like, you need to appreciate your custodians. I've worked in many school districts, and I have never seen the custodial staff who are as willing to help as they do in Monticello. Your district helps each other more than any custo, any staff that I've ever seen. Hoaglands was amazing. They have every challenge I gave them. They were amazing. If I couldn't get somebody some food to somebody who was on quarantine, they stepped up. Not only did they do regular bus routes, but they actually brought food to quarantine families for us. And then Monticello leadership, all of you that were here for me, Tina, Eric, Barb, and all of you. When I leaned on you, when I asked questions so I can learn, thank you so much. And obviously, my Sedexo team, Lori McMahon is my boss, so I appreciate her. And, you know, Deb and all of my Whitmore team, they are always there for me, so thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
One.
Yes.
We have an online program this year, Online 882. Are those kids included in the meal program?
They are not considered distance learners. They're online learners. So as of right now, there weren't enough of them that they were needing food service. But I know if we switch, then we would definitely find a modality for them. But I think it was more due to staffing and security that we just didn't have the ability to at right now.
Thank you, Sierra.
Absolutely.
All the information, knowing that things went as well as it seemed to from my perspective.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now you ladies, if you need lunch, come and talk to me. Actually, are you going to be doing that senior lunch thing again? We'll be talking.
Because you got two students who really want it.
They look lovely.
Yeah.
Hope that opens annually.
Right.
Now, Mr. Olson with our first day report.
Well, Sierra just mentioned the progressive start that we have this year. And I think as administrators and teachers and students, I think we've grown to really appreciate that progressive start. It started a few years back with just kindergarten, and now it's rolled into many different grades starting at different dates. And that gives every, I think, every kid, every staff member of certain ages what they need to succeed and start a successful school year. Even before that, there's a lot of things that go into a school year and preparing it. And this year, like most years, you see a lot of the normal routines going on. Building cleanings, scheduling in all the buildings. You see the building mailings and all the communication that goes on throughout the, each building. But along with those normal duties, we also had a host of additional responsibilities that have, came upon us in the last 19 months. But preparing nature-based sites, developing a certified online program, developing our third safe COVID plan in the last 19 months, reorganizing some administrative teams in buildings. And then with that, everybody throughout our community has experienced some kind of unsettling historic time for families or businesses or individuals. And that's been going on throughout the community. So lots of normal things, but also lots of preparations that are more new or things because of the time. And while we navigate those challenges of 2021, we can go on record and say that our students are either coming to, back to us or they're starting with us with smiles. There's a, there is a sense of normalcy that I have witnessed this year. I was talking with Linda Borging today, and she said just even the hugs that maybe we've received in the, in the last couple of days or maybe it's some of the more normal talks about, about schedules at the high school and not so much as stress is on the faces of our kids. And I think that's good. That's what we want. We know that there's social, emotional challenges during the times that we've been experiencing the last few years. And the more normalcy we can give our kids, the better that they can function and be the best versions of themselves. And we're really trying to, to balance that with the, the challenges of our times during pandemic. So one thing that I know is that when you look across the district and you see kids being cared for by very caring adults, and you know that you're in the right place. And that's what I see in our, in our school system, is a lot of caring people, caring for students with their whole hearts. We look forward to using those hearts through this school year, learning from the last 19 months, using the longstanding tradition of excellence in our district, and also recognizing the social, emotional strains that have been on, on kids, hopefully using extracurriculars that start out the year and finish the whole year in session in many different programs, feeling the successes of that normalcy that kids and staff members alike strive for. So I'd just like to say to the audience, to the staff, to the students, to their families, welcome to the 21-22 school year. This is just a snapshot of, of the very first day at a couple of our elementaries. And we'll continue to take pictures and videos of the schools because since that first day at the elementary, we had, like I said, or like Sierra said, we had ninth grade start on Tuesday. And then this was actually a picture, whether we had high school, the rest of the grades start on Wednesday. This is a picture from Thursday at the elementary schools. So then Friday, we had kindergarten start, and then today, we had preschool start. So we have everybody rocking and rolling throughout the district now for a full district day-to-day start.
Thank you, Eric. Now we can move on to our COVID-19 update with Barb Wilson.
We have a very brief update. We've only really been in school a few days, but as you know, we've been monitoring our numbers closely since we started about the middle of August with students coming back in for open house activities, things along that line. So brief update today, if you can just go to the next slide, please. We continue to follow our safe learning plan. As Eric mentioned, this is the third plan in the last 19 months, and our most current plan is posted on the webpage. We met today with our health service staff and reiterated what the plan contains and the importance of sticking with the health, the safe in-person learning plan as far as our health office protocols and really all the pieces of it. So far, we've, as we've been talking about, we've got a smooth start getting the year going, and we'll be watching our numbers really closely the next couple of weeks. We know our numbers will go up because we have more students here in our buildings, more staff, all staff, all students. So not to be alarmed, but we know that we have a good plan in place. We know that we have been cautious about COVID and what, how this could impact our families, our students and our staff. And we're also really open to changing as we need to. So words of encouragement really for everyone. As I mentioned, we met with our nurses today and just reiterated some of our quarantine guidelines, some of our notification procedures for close contacts. And we acknowledge that we have taken a little bit tighter, if you will, approach than some districts, but that's where we want to start. So that's where we're working. And so far, I would say one of the best things that we see happening is that if people are sick, they're staying home. This is really important, staff and students alike. We just want to reiterate, that really is the best, safest thing to do. So we'll just continue to focus on the strategies that we have in place. We'll continue to give communications weekly, update our COVID site weekly, our dashboard, and go from there. Some of the things on the horizon that you'll be seeing more about is we are going to work to have more continuous vaccination opportunities, seeing if we can continue to work with Centra Care, just to keep those opportunities open and available, easy access for staff and students. And then also looking at some possible optional testing to happen for our staff in our health offices in our buildings. So just really looking at trying to be ready and look at doing everything we can to keep people confident, assured that we're taking this seriously and on a good path. So like I said, this is an important week, the next couple of weeks for us to keep a close eye on. We will. We'll keep the board in close communication with what's going on. That's our update for tonight. Any questions? Well, as always, just keep feeding questions and keep us to what you hear, too, so that we can be responsive, so. All right.
Thanks.
Now on to our second reading of policy, Mr. Olson.
All right, so second reading of policy tonight. We have two policies that we're bringing forward. Policy 208 is a development, adoption and implementation of policies. And then policy 214, student representative on the school board. And I should say representatives, and that's one of the things that we did change is to develop a two-person system that had junior and senior in hopes that we had a junior and senior to keep a tradition going longer and connect to those people. So that's one of the changes that was in that policy. But the policy committee has had opportunity to work through these policies with MSBA recommended changes. They've previously had the first reading across the school board here. And then we've all had time to review the policies in the packet. Are there any questions regarding either of these two policies at this time?
Can I get a motion to approve these two policies?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Candy, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. And now we are at the end of the agenda, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. We are adjourned at 6:38. Thank you, everyone.